Gentlemen, thank you for attending our committee of the whole meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Sedell followed by a moment of silence and ready to take.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin tonight with a presentation on community schools led by our Coordinator of Grants and Community Relations, Mrs. Daria Devlin. Daria, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all. I know we have a lot to cover this evening. This particular item was on the agenda for a few months now, so we're going to cover it. We're going to cover it fairly quickly, but I did want to let all of you know about a program that we're working on that is really a positive thing, and I think that especially tonight, it might be nice to start with something like that. So, tonight, we're talking about community schools, and I want to inform the board about what community schools are and bring you up to speed on some work we've been doing. So, I'm going to start, of course, with the challenges that we all know that we're facing. This is nothing new to anyone here. Challenges in Erie right now, we know, are youth violence, community disorganization, poverty, all of these things. But I want to add at the bottom there, that last bullet point about coordination of service delivery. Something really specifically that we see in our community right now is a complete disorganization of the services that we're providing, particularly to our youth who need it the most. So, these are things that we're grappling with in the school district, but also that we see as a community, there seems to be some disconnect between the services that are out there and the kids and families that are able to take advantage of them. So, obviously, again, for this audience here, most of you know this information, here in Erie's public schools, we have about 12,000 students. Eighty percent of those students are classified as economically disadvantaged. Nine percent of them are English learners. One particular point there are the combined scores for advanced and proficient on our grade three PSSA ELA test is 34 percent. That means that about a third of our students in grade three are scoring in advanced and proficient, so that's clearly in need for us right now. We know we need to focus more on literacy, particularly among our young learners. And then, of course, our budget deficit, that's why most of us are here this evening, but it impacts everything else that we're doing as well. So, in addition to the factors that we're facing, there's also all these other things that are impacting our kids that really have very little to do with what we're doing in school, but they're bringing with them. We know that many of them are facing low birth weight and some prenatal influences that we have no control over. We know that many of them suffer from inadequate medical, dental, and vision care. We know that many of them suffer from food insecurity. They don't know where their next meal might be coming from. Family relations and family stress, various levels of parent availability and support, and then many of our students are moving around a lot. And these are things that they're bringing with them to school that we have to deal with, but very often, we don't have the resources to do so. So, about six months ago, we were approached locally by our United Way of Erie County to explore with them a new model, which is called a community school. And in a community school, basically, all of the services and programs that are available to students and families are brought into the school building so that they become more accessible to everyone in the school. And importantly, they're also aligned and coordinated in a way that, right now, we're not able to do on our own. So, this is the formal definition of community schools. It's a place and a set of partnerships. It allows the community to come in and provide services to kids and families that they need and to align them with the things already happening in the school. All of that sounds really great to us. I was able to travel with the United Way representatives here and a couple of our principals to Allentown, where community schools are really taking off. We were allowed to see how community schools are impacting that district, and we were just blown away by the feeling in the school, the community presence in the schools, the parent involvement in the schools. And these were schools that were struggling in many of the same ways that we were, but we were seeing changes in those schools because of this model. And so, we came back to Erie really excited about what this could mean for our district. These are some of the things we saw. We saw really high-quality academic instruction. We saw community-based learning. We saw comprehensive services, medical health, mental health, prevention, support, behavioral health, all being offered right in the school, which was really a new thing for us. We saw early childhood development, family engagement, all of these wonderful programs and services being offered, and most importantly, being coordinated by someone who wasn't a district employee, which was something that we found to be really interesting. So, this whole model for community schools is very results-focused. In schools where community school models have been implemented, we're seeing improvements in attendance, academic improvements, engagement, a real change in the engagement between the school, the family, and the community, so all these really positive things that are happening. And the advantage of the community school model is really that bringing those additional resources into the school building reduces the demands on the school staff. One of the principals that I traveled with said to me, "I would love to coordinate all of these programs, but I don't have the time to do it. I have to focus on the instructional needs of my teachers and my staff and the students." And so, this model provided a new person in the building to do all of these things and did it without the district having to spend a dime, with community partners and community money that brought that to bear. So, that was really exciting. So, the key principles of the community school, strong partnerships, accountability, sharing data to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're all, you know, doing what's best for the kids, and we're all watching each other to make sure that our data is aligned. So, our plan for the fall, if possible, would be to pilot four or five of these community schools here in the district. And we're bringing it to the board tonight just to start to tell you what we are thinking. Of course, we'll provide you with more information and keep you informed of the process, but our goal would be to work closely with United Way of Erie County to pilot these schools. United Way of Erie County has told us that they will help with funding. They are aligning their own resources around this model. We'll choose those schools based on an internal process, so it will be available to every principal, and we'll choose community partners to come in based on a very open process. We will be open to any partner or agency that would like to come in and help us with this. So, again, very brief overview of community schools. There's lots of information available at the bottom there. You can see communiteschools.org, lots of data, lots of information. Tonight's just a really quick first look, but wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Does anybody have questions for me? Yeah, Tom?
Besides the United Way, have there been any other organizations that have stepped up and said that they'd be interested?
We received overwhelming support. When we initially invited agencies to come in and learn about it, just like you are right now, from the Downtown Y to the Bayfront Maritime Center, Family Services, many organizations told us they were on board, they wanted to help. They see this as a better way to reach the people they're already trying to reach, so we really were overwhelmed, and we think that many organizations will come on board as well. And importantly, they'll bring their own resources to bear. The district will only provide the space in the school. They'll bring all the services and resources in. Any other questions?
Is lady in the audience has a question, Daria?
I have a question. You say that this isn't going to cost our district any money, but I have kids in these schools right now, and I don't know if you do.
I do.
But these kids are packed, 33 kids to a classroom in janitor closets. Where are you going to put this?
Where does your child go?
I have one student, my one son at Wilson Middle School, and two at Jefferson Elementary. That was the first concern raised by our principals, where will this fit? And the school that we toured was so crowded, they had actually carved out a space for this one office under the stairwell in the school. So, we've looked around and said, "Of course, we're going to have to put this office in somewhere. They might have to just share a space with the principal." And because the model is so positive, most of our principals have said they're willing to do that.
I don't see anywhere where you... In the schools that my kids attend, my kids go to McKinley, and there are students in janitor closets taking classes. So, I don't see where you could put a social services, a dentist's office, and all of this, and that completely sounds so unreal and out of touch with reality.
We've also asked for funds with capital improvements if we were going to add those kinds of things to help with that. In the beginning, it's one half of an office is all that's needed.
If I could, at McKinley, for example, we do have a beautiful library, and if we had to, we could put a cubicle in a library for an office. We're going to talk about this later, we're going to talk about the budget, but we have been forced for years and continue to be forced to do more and more with less. What this offers us the opportunity to do is to provide more for our kids, take it off our budget, and let the community come in and help our students. If we've got to put an office in a, I don't care, on a roof, bring a truck in, if we can provide better resources for our kids, I'll do whatever we have to do to provide.
I agree with you there, but I think that if we're going to provide better resources for our kids, we should start with the buildings that the kids are in.
Thank you.
My kids go to a school where they will not use the restroom facilities because there are roaches and ants. And I would rather see, you know, things like that get worked on. I understand that we're trying to bring the community in, but at the same time, I feel like that's taken away from what we're really working on here. Like she said, that nine percent of our students are English as a second language, nine percent. That is a very, very small number, yet we spend all this money on English as a second language and all these classes tailored specifically to these nine percent of our district. I don't understand why we're tailoring, like, nine percent. We're tailoring our curriculum, our lunch menus, and our processes to their communities, and it's not fair. My kids can't have pepperoni on their pizza because the majority of the students at McKinley are a different religion, and they don't eat pork. Like, every Friday, a school in this district gets Domino's Pizza. Friday, Emerson Bridley and a couple other schools will walk away with Domino's Pizza. Who pays for that?
Our cafeteria fund.
Our cafeteria fund.
Right.
Why? Why are we giving kids Domino's Pizza when they can't add and subtract? It doesn't make sense.
Mr. Sill, any other questions? Any other questions for me?
How is the family aspect collaborating? Because I think this is the biggest point that we need to get, is to get the parents on board with this school, because that's where the big gap is now.
So, Daria, go ahead. Thank you for your presentation. I'll hand it to you. In the schools that we visited, what was so encouraging to see was that the people that were brought in to be these coordinators to work on this model were from the community. They already had relationships with parents and members of the community, so there's a built-in trust. And I know that's part of the problem that we have with parent engagement and family engagement. This show, this model, is the most hopeful thing that I've seen as far as improving that relationship. So, we're just, again, studying this, moving forward with the pilot, hopefully, to begin to do a better job of it.
Which one do you have, it's really, which school, exactly the same school, which one's?
Okay, I visited one. The United Way actually sent me to a conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico, a school called Kirtland Elementary. The team we sent was two of our principals and Mrs. Devlin, who went to see schools in Allentown, Pennsylvania, so they have community schools. We will, Daria, is there a way for us to put a link on the web?
Sure.
And make some information available for people from the public to view? We'll make that available.
What schools for the Erie school district are you looking to...
Oh, as Mrs. Devlin said, we're going to put this out to principals. We think to start, we could probably only manage four or five. The United Way actually wanted to start with one or two. I feel like the need is too great. I also feel like if there's a grant out there that we're trying to apply for, that if we get it, it'll allow us to jump-start the process, and I think four or five schools is a realistic goal for next year. So, it'll depend on which principals are willing to try it, because everyone we talked to said that if the fit isn't appropriate between that community school structure and the school, it'll fail.
We've got to build this right. We've got to make sure that we have our part of that process when we invite these outside entities in, and that it's all done right.
As another parent, and we were talking, I just wanted to thank you for opening with that good idea. People were listening. It's actually something you're approaching differently. I think there's a lot of people who want to get things off their chest, but if we could continue on, because that wasn't really the focus of tonight.
There's a question.
Yes.
My question is, of the barriers that she read, what is going to change to make this work? This is my first question.
So, this is the last question I'll take on this, because we do, this is a committee of the whole meeting, and I love the fact that so many people are here. Obviously, you're here because of the news this morning, but I wish we had this many people here concerned about their schools every month. But to your question, there are certainly lots of barriers, and how we're going to address them is this model. So, one of the reasons I think that parents are sometimes not involved in our schools is because they either lack trust, they may have had experiences in the past of their own that didn't lead them to think that the school is a place where problems would be solved. By bringing in these outside agencies and bringing people from the community in to help work as more or less ambassadors between the school and these agencies, we hope to break that down. And so, and again, I can't make a promise and say it's going to be a cure-all, but it has to be an improvement.
What happens when these contributors, if they don't get that outcome or result they're looking for, they start pulling funds? Where does that leave us?
Well, there's any number of possible negative outcomes that can happen, but I'll give you just one quick example of what I saw in Albuquerque. There was an extremely high-poverty school, no grocery stores anywhere in the neighborhood, sandwiched between an air force base and an airport. Certainly looked a lot poorer than any of our schools. Food insecurity was a huge problem. People were hungry. They started a program through this system that was called Homework Diner, and so every night, they had the community invited in to work with students to complete their homework, and the corporate funders of the programs, restaurants, the local food bank, attended, taught parents how to make nutritious meals, provided food as part of this, and it's gaining momentum. They have a university involved, and so partners may come and go. One partner may decide it's not in their interest to continue with the school, and it's up to the coordinators, it's up to this structure within the school to find new partners. We have, one thing I've learned with all the things the district's been through in the last several years, there's no lack of people who want to help. Often, the barrier to that help is not having a structure for it, or not having room, as this lady mentioned, or not, maybe we're all competing for resources. This lets us all work together, sort of combine resources, to do what we ultimately want to do, just to serve our kids. And if it fails, it fails, but I can't pass on the opportunity to try.
So, if it fails, it fails. I understand. And I'm going to shut up after this. Where does that leave our kids? Thank you. That's the only question I've got.
Thank you.
Better off for having tried, because right now, what did they have?
I'm on 25th and Chestnut, I'm going to Pikeville early, because you closed Glenwood. And you buy schools back, and every other...
Under the Robert's rules, you need to be acknowledged to voice out. Man, you have a question?
I have a comment. This is my first time. My name is Shawnee Foyham. I'm the Director of Nurture and Parks, which is self-creating, self-developing, and all the organizations that act as girls. And this is my first time actually hearing about community schools, and I'm very pleased to hear about something like this being implemented into our Erie Public Schools, because Nurture and Parks has been a sort of community school program in the Erie school district since 2007. I approached Mr. Adam Devlin when I founded the organization, and he is a major family center, and he's been there for probably about, in the Erie school district, so probably about, I don't know, maybe eight years now implementing the program, and they've always found these things for us, from the family center to youth high school, senior high school, district management, and he serves about 12 hundred girls with our program. These students have great outcomes, despite behavior, school attendant, violent, teen pregnancy has decreased, as you saw in the newspaper yesterday, and it's been a really good program. When I first started it, we did get a small contract from the organization for the first year, and the budget was in deficit, and it was a private startup way back then. And I didn't charge them any more. I did the program for free, and I've been running the program for free ever since, going into the community, raising my own money for partnering with different organizations, with universities. So, when I hear about this community school, it's something that we've already been doing for a long time, and I could speak from personal experience by starting the organization and getting support from the school district, and also from the students that we serve, that it's been very beneficial to me.
Thank you very much. If we're going to move forward from here, if that's all you have...
Yeah, if I could maybe tee it up a little bit, Mr. Sill?
Sure.
So, I know there's anger and uncertainty in the room right now, and I'm going to ask you to listen to us, because one, if you take nothing else away from this meeting tonight, I hope that your anger is directed in the right place. So, if you bear with us and let us go through this proposed final budget presentation and try to learn where we are right now, my hope is that you'll have a better understanding for what we're up against, and I agree with the sentiment in this room, as a parent in the school district as well, as a parent of a son who has to go into restrooms in Roosevelt that are less than ideal. And we're going to walk out of here understanding very clearly what the problem is and where the solution to this problem lies. So, with that, if I could go on with the budget presentation?
You may, sir.
So, every year, the state law requires us to pass a balanced budget by June 30th, and part of that process is to pass what's called a proposed final budget at the end of May. And then, that proposed final budget is placed out for public view, and is a period of time where people are able to comment, and then ultimately, at the end of June, we pass our budget, on time, every single year, and balanced. And that may not reflect what you heard about this past year with regard to the state's budget, which is also due on June 30th. The district, if it's a surprise to anyone that the district's in severe financial trouble, I'm not exactly sure how you could not know that things are coming to this end. We have had numerous reports, there have been numerous editorials written, not necessarily by me. The district's financial condition has been placed on our web ever since I took over. We have talked about the fact that we had a lot of work to do internally to make sure that we fixed the district's financial practices. I can sit here and look every single one of you in the eye and tell you we've done that. There's still maybe a place here or there where we could shave costs, but we have closed schools that I wish we didn't have to close. We've laid off staff that I wish we didn't have to lay off. We have gone through our accounting systems. We've done an outstanding job, I think, of cutting costs, and we're going to go through that in a moment, but this is the sixth consecutive budget process that I've presided over as superintendent, in which this board has been asked to cut our way to a balanced budget, the sixth year in a row. I want you to think about that. So, maybe we had some money, some room to cut at the beginning of this process, but year after year after year, we've been forced to cut programs, cut services, cut to a balanced budget, millions of dollars at a time.
And I want to thank you for it, because you got to do it. You can't sit there and act like it ain't nothing to cut. You got to cut it.
You're right, and it's cut. And I can also look you all in the eye now and tell you we've cut enough. And yet, we have to cut 10 million more this year. So, pardon me, I did write some notes down. I tend to get a little fired up about this, so I want to make sure I get all the key points in before we go through this presentation. I made a lot of promises when I took over. I promised that we would write the financial ship of the school district, and I feel like the board and the administration has done that. And now, with the addition of Mr. Brian Toledo as our Chief Financial Officer, I believe wholeheartedly that we're doing as much as we can with the funding we have. I've also realized, though, that as we focused internally to figure out how we can cut to work within the funds that we have, I never really questioned that maybe there's something else at work here that I'm not aware of. Maybe there's something wrong with the way we're funded and the way we're funded relative to other districts in the Commonwealth. Maybe there's an equity problem there. I didn't really think about that, because I thought we have a lot of work to do internally to get our financial system under control. But a little over a year ago, we worked with Jim Schaftner of Schaftner Knight &amp; Ninnott. I invited them to come in, the board engaged them, to come in and take a look at our system. Number one, to check out, to see how our internal workings were functioning, but also to look at the larger issues and look at a prognosis essentially for our school district for the next four or five years. Their conclusion was that we're facing the possibility of bankruptcy. And that was really an echo of something that Public Resources Advisory Group that we engaged even before that had also suggested. So, when Mr. Toledo came on board, he thought that since he had been very successful at both Jenner McLean and Northeast School District in cutting their budgets and getting them on firm financial footing, that there had to be places where he could do the same sort of efficiencies that he was able to accomplish there, only to realize that we'd already made those cuts. And I'll let Brian speak for himself in a moment. But I, at the same time, promised that we'd get the district's finances under control, I also warned that if we did all these things and we got the district on a firm financial footing, that I did not see how we would avoid increasing costs in the future and face the inevitable slide back down into a deficit position. That's before I even fully understood the depths of the inequity of Pennsylvania's funding system. There was no doubt that increases in the pension contribution that we're required to provide, increases in the cost of charter schools, would certainly outstrip our ability even to raise taxes. Now, we have a limit through Act One of our ability to raise taxes, which we continually push up against, and the costs that I just mentioned a moment ago are sure to rise beyond our ability to raise taxes. So, even if we wanted to tax our way out of this situation, we can't. So, with that sort of impossible backdrop, we went into this budget year and went through this extreme budget impasse, and there was a glimmer of hope. About a year ago, actually, the Republican majority started what was called the Basic Education Funding Commission. Erie's not alone. There are lots of cities and poor rural districts that are in very similar financial situation that we're in. And so, this commission was a bipartisan commission. There were Republicans and Democrats on it. The administration's key leaders, the Secretary of Education, Secretary of Budget, were on the commission, both in the corporate administration, then when it continued past the change in the government, members of the Wolf administration were on that committee. They took testimony from over 100 different entities and individuals, all across the Commonwealth. I testified in Greenville, and when they got done, they listened to everybody, all sides of the issue, regular, traditional public schools, charter schools, parochial system, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, the Administrators Associations, the teachers' unions. They listened to everyone, and when they were all done, they did what I never expected them to do. They actually produced a fair funding formula. They looked at the different school districts and they said, "If you're educating a large number of students that are coming to you and coming from situations of poverty, you should get extra money from the state, because you can't, you don't have a tax base to generate enough revenue to run your schools." They said, "If you have a high percentage," and this was already mentioned, "of students who've come to America, don't know the language and need to learn it, that costs more money, so we will provide additional funds to districts based on the number of students they have that are English-language learners. Students with special needs would be accommodated." They also put in a factor to account for districts that were already taxing their residents above as much as they could, and gave us extra credit for that. They also recognized that some communities are relatively poor, so they gave us another qualifier based on median household income. And the upshot of that was that they recognized that our district was underfunded by about $37 million. And they realized that over 300 districts are overfunded, because since 1991, the state has not used the number of students to determine how much money each district gets. Back then, they had a budget impasse. At that budget impasse, the way they got around making a decision to actually fix the problem was to implement something called Hold Harmless. They said, "Okay, every district will just get what it got last year, no matter what happens to your number of students, plus whatever increase we decide to give." And they have not changed that practice to this day. Actually, with the most recently passed fiscal code, they started to. So, what that means is a whole bunch of districts out there that have lost students. In our county, the population of students in Erie County has decreased in the county districts by nearly 20%, while our population has stayed the same or grown. Yet, the funding has stayed the same in all those districts. Yet, the funding has stayed the same in all those districts. And Brian's going to walk you through that to see what those numbers look like. Now that we have this awareness, I will be advising the board on what I think we should do with our budget, but I'll tell you one thing, I don't think we should raise local property taxes anymore. I don't think our citizens should have to pay more when the state is not paying its fair share. And I don't think we should cut our students anymore because I know what we've cut. And I don't think that it's fair to our students that we cut anything else and take anything else from them. So, we're going to launch into this. Were we going to show the video first?
No.
We're not. Are we showing it afterwards? I want to. Thank you. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Brian Palito as our chief financial officer to walk you through the nuts and bolts of the budget. Again, I know that we have a lot of folks here to participate in the meeting. The purpose of this meeting is really to have a conversation with the board to help them make a decision. We'll have our regular public meeting next Wednesday, where the board will actually vote on a proposed final budget. So I ask you to please hold your comments and questions. This is a chance for the board to discuss, ask the administration questions, and for Mr. Palito to present to them so they can make an informed decision next week. So Brian, do you want the controller?
Sure.
So, before we get into the '16-'17 budget, I think we ought to take a look at where we're at right now. So if you take a look at this first slide, right now, as Dr. Adams mentioned, we've had six consecutive years of budget cuts. And as a result of that, we are very lean. Our cost per pupil at $12,904 per student is below the county average and below the state average. In fact, we spend less than 80% of the school districts in the state on a per pupil basis. In order to get up to the county average, as far as per pupil spend, we would have to spend $7 million more a year. In order to get up to the state average, we would have to spend $29 million more per year.
And before Brian goes on, I know, if you're like me, these numbers are astronomical. I can't imagine what a million dollars is, let alone 29 or 12. I only know it from the reference point of cutting it from our budget. If we had ever had a year, in the last six to seven years in which we had money to plan to spend, I would not know what to do. I honestly wouldn't. I wouldn't know where to start. More textbooks, more computers, tax reduction for our property taxpayers? There's so many things that I would love to do if we had some money that I can't. How about a trap that you can actually put lines on that has more than two lanes for 13,000 students? There are a lot of things that we could certainly work together as a community to prioritize if we had money to spend instead of to cut. But sorry, Brian.
That's okay. And just to put that into perspective, as far as our budget, our total budget this year is about $185 million. So just imagine what we could do with $29 million more a year to spend. Looking at the real estate taxes, that's not a solution for us to balance our budget. If you can see the chart in the top left-hand corner, our real estate tax rate is one of the highest in the county. And because of our exempt properties, which are above 30% or almost 30%, we collect one of the lowest amount of real estate taxes on a per pupil basis in the county. And compare us with Fort LeBoutre up there, they have one of the lowest real estate tax rates, and they collect almost four times per pupil the amount of real estate tax that we do.
Brian, why is that?
It's because they have Summit and the casino.
So they have Upper Peach, they have the casino, they have the landfill. All of that, that's all in their tax base.
So if we were to raise taxes to balance our budget, we started out with close to a $10 million budget deficit. That would require a 25% increase in our real estate taxes. Act One, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner there, only allows us to increase taxes 3.7%, which would generate $1.4 million in taxes. That doesn't even put a dent in the deficit that we're facing this year. So we have a low cost per pupil because we've cut over the last six years. Our real estate tax rate is one of the highest in the county, so why do we continue to have to cut? And the issue is at the state level. This chart here shows, just compares us to all 500 school districts across the state. And you can see our median household income at $33,000 a year is 485th out of 500 school districts. That's in the bottom 3% of the state. Our poverty rate, our English language learners, our charter enrollment, all are in the top 3%. But our state and local revenue on a per pupil basis is 484th out of 500, it's the very bottom. We just don't have the resources available to us to provide a similar education to school districts that are hold harmless and have received increases over the years. And this chart really drills down and compares us to the county. And this scatter plot at the bottom, if you can see, that's median household income. So the further right you go on that chart, the wealthier the school district, the further up the chart, the more revenue on a state and local basis a school district receives. So the higher up you go on the chart, the more you receive in real estate taxes and state subsidy and those type of things. And you can see we're an outlier there. We're the poorest school district in the whole tri-county area, and we have by far the lowest revenue on a per pupil basis.
So what is supposed to happen with state funding is the state is supposed to help to equalize that. Obviously, if you live in a township that is rather wealthy, it has a strong housing stock, and generates a lot of local property tax, you can generate more from your tax rate to supply your students with schools. And so you would get less state money. And in a district like ours, with all these challenges, we're supposed to get more state money so that there's less of a burden on the local property tax base because of all these additional needs. But something has gone terribly wrong.
And if you take a look at this chart, you can see Mill Creek is up around $12,000 per pupil in state and local revenue. We're close to $11,000. A $1,000 bump to get up to the lowest next school district there would increase our revenue by almost $14 million a year.
So 14 million to get to the lowest in the county, and we're talking about cutting another 10 million. Not adding 14 million.
So our issue is not an issue with how much we're spending, it's an issue of how much we're receiving. And it's not how much we're receiving locally, it's how much we're receiving from the state. This chart just compares our state and local revenue again to the tri-county area. And I also have some statistics down here. And again, we have the lowest median household income in Erie, Warren, Crawford County. Our poverty rate is by far the highest. We're off the charts as far as English language learners, and our charter enrollment again is at the top. And our fundings at the bottom. Now, I can make a pretty good case, given the challenges we have in this district, that we should be at the top of that chart. If we received the same funding as Coniat School District, our revenue would increase $53 million a year.
Again, a number I can't comprehend. If we had $53 million more, we could fix our schools and keep them from crumbling on our kids' heads. Let's keep going. And before we go too far, Brian, I want to say this. This is not the fault of our neighboring districts. I don't want anyone to walk out of here thinking that somehow the districts in Erie County are conspiring so that our kids get less. That's not what this is about. So, the board's job tonight, and the administration's job, is, you have to click twice through these, Brian. In fact, you can slow the slide. So we have to cut $10 million. Brian's already found a number of ways to increase our revenue. We've managed to cut almost $6 million already without damaging the classroom or minimizing damage to the classroom. But we still have to cut 4.3 million more to get to a balanced budget. We're supposed to pass a balanced budget by June 30th. Now, the numbers that we're going to go through now assume that the governor gets at least half of what he's asked for in his proposed budget. Now, you saw what happened in the '15-'16 budget process. So not so sure that's going to happen. But we're trying to be somewhat conservative, so we're planning for the governor getting half of what he's asked for. However, we have heard from our local delegation as recently as yesterday that that's probably not likely, judging from some of the rhetoric that's already brewing up in the Capitol. You can advance it. The other thing that we need to, the board needs to understand is that we were notified by Public Resources Advisory Group that handles the bidding of our Tax Revenue Anticipation Note. And for those of you here, Tax Revenue Anticipation Note, or TRAN, is a short-term loan that the district takes every year. When I first started, we used to borrow $35 million a year to get the school year started before our local property tax started to come in and before our first disbursement of state funding would come. We've managed to, through all these cuts, managed to whittle that down to $12 million a year. Prag notified Brian that they are not optimistic that we'll get anyone to bid on our tax revenue note for a couple of reasons. Number one, they are all keenly aware of what we've been going through and what kind of a credit risk we are. Beyond that, the state typically guarantees any loan that we take out through something called an intercept agreement. If you follow the news, the intercept agreement, because of the state's budget impasse and its history of budget strife over the course of several years, has been essentially dismissed by the bond markets and the credit rating agencies. So that they give it no weight anymore. It's like they're guaranteeing us something, but the state's not being trusted with that guarantee. So, that's out the door. So, we may not get anyone to take that loan. There's still a chance we can go out to individual banks and get them to give us a loan, and we'll pursue that. But right now, it's questionable as to whether we'll get a TRAN or not. And if we do get a TRAN, there's extremely high likelihood, if not a certainty, that we'll pay a much higher interest rate on that money. Now, here's the other thing. I was in Harrisburg for the state board meeting last week, and I asked the Secretary of Education that if we can't get a TRAN, can we get an advance against the state's money? So not wait until that disbursement, but actually get an advance on our basic education subsidy. And he said, "Yes, we could." He urged me to have Brian get in contact with the person in charge of that in Harrisburg. And the problem with that is if we take that money in advance, that is one of the triggers that the secretary of that can use to determine that we are what's called a financial recovery district, essentially a district that's in danger of bankruptcy. So we need to think about that, that if we can't get a TRAN and we have to appeal to Harrisburg to get an advance on our basic education subsidy, we could be at risk for being a financial recovery district, like nine or so, or eight or so other districts in the Commonwealth.
Which means what?
Well, that's a good question. Right now, it doesn't mean anything. Because we've been told also that the state already has enough districts that are failing financially that it's monitoring and taking care of that it can't take anymore. So I was told that we can't be in recovery. So unless the law is changed or the implementation of the law is allowed some flexibility, we may very well be in a bankrupt situation, but not able to be called bankrupt by the state. So I don't know what that means. As we get clarity around it, I'll keep the board informed. But essentially, I've said in the last few days, we'll quack like a duck, we'll look like a duck, and waddle like a duck, but we won't be able to be called a duck. So that's normally an automatic trigger. So if you can advance. Another thing that we need to keep in mind as we're thinking about the backdrop from this budget process is that because of the way the funding was dispersed in the '15-'16 budget that just got resolved, we're going to finish this year with a negative fund balance of $2.5 million. So we're starting out with what's called a negative fund balance. It's like if you overspent your checking account. And this is another one of the criteria that the Secretary of Education can use to determine that a district's in financial recovery status. But again, the state's apparently not designating districts as being in financial recovery, but this is a second strike, if you will, that can help determine that the district's in financial recovery. So back to you.
So, again, we started this budget cycle with about a $10 million deficit. And what we've included in the budget that you'll see tonight are the following cuts. We, again, we did this with an eye on trying to preserve what we have left in the classroom. So one of the first cuts we made were 10 central office positions, which will save us about $1.4 million a year. We also, this was the last year for the GE grant, that paid for almost all of our curricular purchases for the last several years, as well as our professional development and our 22 instructional coaches. Because that's going away, we had to cut those programs as well. The retirement incentive was a big saver for us. We originally were looking at about $150,000 in savings because of the eight retirements. Right now, we have about 50 retirements, so that should save us a net of $1.2 million. We also are doing a reconfiguration at Emerson Gridley, which will allow us to reduce elementary positions by five, which is $300,000. And the other item we're looking at as well is reducing our charter and our regular transportation to state minimum levels. So altogether, we're looking with that at about $6 million in budget cuts, which still leaves a budget deficit of $4.3 million.
So just so everyone understands, we actually cut the central office administration by nearly 50% when we had our $26 million budget deficit. We have, I mean, I know everybody always jumps to that as the first solution, that there's too many overpaid administrators at the school district, and so that's where we should start the cuts. I said back when we had the $26 million deficit, you could cut every single administrator, every central office administrator, me, the assistant superintendent, all the principals and assistant principals, and save $7 million. At that time, we had to still find another $19 million cuts. At this point, we're running absolutely, I mean, I think, as lean as we should be running, especially relative to other school districts. And to cut 10 central office positions, we felt was, given everything else that's facing our district, the best way for us to start. So I don't know what that means for the board's benefit. I don't know what that means in terms of our ability to comply with state regulations and so forth with all the different programs that each of our directors manage. I don't know what that means in terms of the other support services that we provide, whether or not we'll still be able to provide some level that's acceptable, but I see no other way.
This page here is just a summary of the budget as it stands right now. Again, we have budgeted for '16-'17, $181.5 million in revenues. That's only a $140,000 increase from the '15-'16 year. And that's basically because we have the GE money going away, and we've been using some health insurance reserves to prop up our budget. That reserve has been depleted. So those revenues disappearing, basically, were offset by the increases we were projecting from the state, and we're netting a $140,000 increase on a $181.5 million budget. On the expenditure side, you can see we're projecting a $185.7 million expenditure budget, and that's an increase of less than 1%. Major drivers on the increases, again, is the retirement contribution. That's a retirement rate set by the state retirement system. That is now going to be 30.03% of payroll. So for every dollar in payroll we pay out, we pay 30 cents into the retirement system.
So just so the public understands, that's not anything we have control over. That's mandated. Every district in the Commonwealth has to pay the same rate. But when I first started in this position, the pension contribution that the district was liable for was in single digits, was maybe 8%. And because the pension's so underfunded, they've turned that back on the districts. And they've ramped that up steadily over the course of the past five years to the point where we'll level off a little over 30% of our total payroll in pension obligations.
Now, the other major increase that is outside of our control is charter tuition. You can see that we have budgeted for this year $23 million in charter tuition, and I have a $1.7 million increase in there, and that's based on what's happened over the last three to four years with that line item. And that, again, is out of our control. So again, you can see for the '16-'17 budget, we have $181.5 million in revenues and $185.7 million in expenditures, and as a result, we've been the year with a $4.3 million deficit. And for '15-'16 projection, as Dr. Adams mentioned, we're projecting that's going And the 1516 projection, as Dr. Adams mentioned, we're projecting that's going to end the year with almost a $3 million deficit as well.
John?
Ryan, the 63% increase in the other employee benefits, that's going up by 450, what was that?
Yeah, I'll get to that in one minute. We'll start with the revenues first. This is just a summary of the major revenue increases and decreases. And as you can see, the number one increase in our revenues is the subsidy we get to offset our retirement increase. So that's really not new money. Our retirement expense is going up $2.5 million, and the state's going to give us back $1.8 million of that. So that's just offsetting an expense on the other side. The allocation for our basic end ready-to-learn, that's our major funding from the state, is $1.7 million. Last year, as part of the budget, they took away our rental subsidy, which is a reimbursement they give us on our debt service for our buildings. We're hoping that they restore that, and that has been included in the budget. And really, the best news we have as far as our budget is, because of the breakfast in the classroom program that was initiated by Mets, our cafeteria fund is actually making over $1 million a year in profit. So this year, we'll be able to allocate some of those expenses back and cover that under the general fund.
Brian, could you just ask one question? On the PlanCon money, the $1.6 million in rental subsidy, is that for sure?
It is not.
My understanding is that that's not been guaranteed yet. So, again, for the audience, we've done construction projects over the years, and the state has a reimbursement that they provide on some of that work that was done. If you think of the upgrade to Joanna Connell that happened, those go back many, many years. The state gives us essentially a rebate on that construction cost. And they don't have the funds right now in Harrisburg. And they're talking about actually trying to borrow money to pay districts what they owe them for this subsidy. So that's not a guarantee. So I kind of forgot. I mean, that's something we need to take into account, that there might be another $1.6 million problem that we're facing.
On the decrease side, again, as I mentioned, this year's the last year of the GE grant, so that revenue won't be available next year. And we've depleted our health insurance reserves, so we won't be able to use that to balance our structural deficit. So again, if you net all that out, we're looking at an increase of $140,000. On the expense side, the major expense increases, again, the number one increase is our Pacer's retirement contribution, which is set by the state. Charter school tuition is number two. Our health insurance, actually, we are projecting out about a 3% increase in that. Overall, we're expecting a 6% increase in inflation, but we were able to negotiate a better deal with Highmark on our prescription drug program, and we expect to save $450,000 a year on that. And as a result, it's up to about a $700,000 increase. And then, Mr. Spiegel, to your question, the increase in the other employee benefits is a result of the retirement incentive that we initiated. And again, after that expense there, we're still projecting savings of about $1.2 million.
Thank you.
On the expenditure decrease side, again, between the retirement incentive and the cuts that we've had to make in central office and the five additional elementary positions, we're projecting a reduction of salaries of $2.5 million. We've also eliminated all our equipment and capital purchases, except for the ones that are covered under our grants. Our payroll taxes are down because of our salaries. And again, the supplies are down as well, and a big portion of that is because the GE grant was going away, and that was paying for some of our curricular purchases.
Ryan?
Yes.
If we don't have a bidder for financing the TRAN, our current balance in the TRAN is $9 million, give or take, which would be paid and then refinanced with the new TRAN. If we don't have a new TRAN because we don't have anyone interested in lending us the money, then we will be facing another $9 million in deficit.
What will happen, because we're going to end the year with a negative fund balance again, because of the deficit this year, without the TRAN, you will probably not be able to make the first or second payroll in July. So, and we're moving on the TRAN right now, trying to negotiate a deal. We're pulling all that paperwork together so that we can get an answer on that sooner rather than later. Because if we aren't able to get the TRAN, we're going to have to make arrangements to have the advance on our subsidy come very quickly.
Now, the new TRAN, 1617, new TRAN, what would be the amount that we will be looking for to finance going forward?
Right now, we're looking at a number of about $15 million.
Just to clarify, if you're honest, that's not that we have $15 million to put in the roof on, that's just to pay our current bills.
It is, right. So, you know, our fund balance right now is $500,000, and it will end the year with a negative 2.5. A school district of our size should have a fund balance that's equivalent to about one and a half month of expenditures, which is $18 million. So if we had a reasonable fund balance, then we would not have to borrow in the TRAN. So the whole reason is because we're in the financial condition we are.
Thank you. Board, any questions? John, Mary, on the other side, Rob?
Well, I'd like to just make a statement. I mean, as we sit here and we're listening to all this, I want you to know that everybody on this board has the same feelings that you do. And that we're all, we're all very upset about the situation we're in. You've got to understand something. I ran for office here trying to think if we could do something to help the kids, to be in... Now, I'm glad you brought your kids. It's a good thing to be looking at children while I'm thinking about this kind of garbage. But I mean, you run for office, this is a non-paying position. Every one of these individuals up here are doing this as a volunteer thing for the community. But that's what you try to do. So you get involved, and you try it. Since I started, four years ago, well, five years ago now, we started off, and right away, it was about the deficit and the things that we had to do. So we had to cut, we had to close schools, which brought even all of the faces that I'm looking at right now. We saw many, many more faces with the same kind of feelings, that what can we do? But we thought, if we close these four schools, we get over this hump, we'll be all right. But the state funding is so unfair in the way that they do it. It's put us in this position that we're caught between a rock and a hard place. And so, that's what this is all about. So I just wanted to make that statement. As long as he asks it, there are any statements, I figured I'd let my emotions out a little bit. That's all.
Thank you, Rob. I'm sorry, I do have a question. Ed?
Time frame. If we, when are we going to find out if we can't get the TRAN? And if we can't get the TRAN, what's the timeframe to get the money from the state?
They, but we're finalizing the paperwork now, and we're hoping to get that out on Monday. So I imagine that we'll have an answer back by the end of next week or early next week.
If not, then the state's done, right?
Yes. Have a call on the EPD, they're not returning my call.
You're probably not the only one calling.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. You have more to do out here? A little surprised.
This is just a pie chart breaking down our expenditures. And as you can see, the majority of our expenses here are in salary and benefits. That makes up almost 70% of our budget. And I just have the retirement and charter tuition highlighted in red there. As you can see, those two items now are approaching almost 20% of our budget. That's almost $45 million of our $185 million budget that we have no control over, and they're our biggest cost drivers. And as those go up, we're forced to shrink everything else to balance the budget. And this is just a breakout by program. You can see that the bulk of our spending is in instruction. Again, if you look at the comparisons across the state, our instructional expenditures are the only one that comes close to somewhere near an average comparison with the rest of the state. Because over the last six years, we've done everything we can to protect those expenditures. And as a result, we've shrunk the rest of the slices of pie to, again, make sure that we get as much as we can into the classroom. And Dr. Adams did point out central administration, all the costs, salaries, benefits, supplies, everything for our central administration at this point is about 3% of our budget. So this is where we're at. We have a budget deficit right now of $4.3 million. And we have provided the board with various options to balance the budget. We have the tax increase, and then a variety of different expenses that we could cut in order to break even.
So I thought it would be a good time now to go through with the board each of these. And if you don't mind, I'd like to give my editorial comment on each of these possible proposals. We, it'd be nice, I'd love it, it's interesting. In the past, when you think of budgets gone by, there was more meat on the bone. There were programs we could consider, there were extra things that we did that we could give up. And it's interesting, I fully intended, or fully expected anyway, that when you bring cuts like these to the public, that there's this thought that, oh, this is some sort of a scare tactic, was the word that was used. This is it. This is what we have left to consider cutting. These are the things that, I guess, I don't want to use the word "non-essential." I think they're essential. And a long, long time ago, I was a medic with the 82nd Airborne Division, and my job was to treat, as a first responder, treat injuries on the battlefield. And we were taught that when someone is badly injured and they're in shock, that what the body does is it roots all blood supply to the vital organs. It shuts down all the peripheral systems. And we had to treat our patients accordingly. If I use that same metaphor with the school district, these things that we're talking about cutting are arms and legs. These aren't extraneous things that we provide for kids. These are things that are taken for granted at other school districts. So, one thing we could do is eliminate all art and music. We've done a, we've tried really hard to preserve our art, music, PE programs. We don't have nearly as much or as frequent instruction in these, what we call the related arts. But if we had the stomach for it, we could save $2.1 million by cutting all art and music. If we eliminate sports and extracurriculars... PE is not included in that, no.
So PE is not on this list to be cut?
Not yet. If you'd like us to add it, we could probably add it to that line.
I was just curious, because out of all the things the kids do, music, art, library, gym was the only one I didn't see. And I thought, if we were going to eliminate art and music, let's get rid of gym class, too.
Well, that would save us a little bit more, but if we eliminate sports and extracurriculars, that saves the district a million and a half dollars. Now again, think about that. Our students, who arguably need things to do outside of school as much, if not way more than other students, to cut that, to me, again, would be criminal. 3.7% real estate tax increase. Every year, this comes up. We made a resolution that we would not raise taxes above the state allowable index. I said at that time that I absolutely did not wish to recommend a tax increase. And that's based in the fact that the state's not doing its job. The state is not fairly funding Erie. And we've already taxed our residents more than they should have to pay. And I stand by that tonight. But if we have to cut another $4.3 million from our budget, this is one thing you'll have to decide, one thing you'll have to consider. We could raise taxes and generate another $1.4 million. Another thing that's been somewhat held sacred by the district over the course of the past six years is keeping full-day kindergarten. We have, we've gone to great lengths to expand pre-K availability for our students. And the notion that we would cut full-day kindergarten when we've made extra effort to provide full-day pre-K, to me, is another preposterous assertion. But this is something that's not mandated, and you could cut if you choose to. Yes, ma'am?
Because I didn't have any kindergarten. Is there's like proven studies that show that full-day kindergarten has an advantage? Or could you go without having? Like I said, I didn't have any kindergarten, so I didn't know. Throughout time, they've realized that it actually had an advantage if students went all day.
You know, I would say yes, without having the studies in front of me. But kindergarten, kindergarten is often referred to now as the new first grade. Our students are learning all those skills, pre-reading skills. They're actually reading in kindergarten now. And with our population of students, with all those factors that Brian ran through before as far as our districts need, we have kids that come to school with deficits in literacy. And so having that full-day program, we feel, is necessary. When you look at our third-grade proficiency rates for literacy, to give up a half a day for an entire year, it's not fair to our kids. It's not giving them a fair chance. But again, it's not required by law. In fact, kindergarten isn't really required by law, strangely. But again, that's 1.1 million that we could reduce. Another thing that we provide, yes, sir?
I have a quick question. Just from listening to you guys, with this $4 million deficit, now even if you cut everything that needs to be cut, could you guys still be sitting here next year, even stripping the bone even more?
So, yeah.
Cutting out, like, are you looking for like a long-term?
You jumped my, you jumped my conclusion. Yeah.
You've cut all these things, and then next year, like, wow, we've got to close two more high schools.
Amen.
I was just wondering, like, you cut it, you're $4 million, now we cut another $4 million.
The answer is yes.
Can we even afford to educate the kids?
You must have read my notes.
It's just like to see what's going on.
We've been doing this for six years, next year will be seven.
I came to this meeting because I heard they were trying to close all the high schools. I was like, what is going on, you close every high school? What are we going?
We'll get to that next. So, another thing that we could do is eliminate our police department. We operate our own police department that has a cooperative arrangement with the EPD. And we have some of our, we have our own officers, they're fully equipped, and they respond to thousands of incidents a year. But if we eliminated that police department, we can save $939.3. We, yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I went to a meeting not too long ago, talking to the Erie Police Department. And I actually feel like the police department on the campus is a great idea, and it would be a great concept to keep. Because like you said, they respond to thousands of calls a year as well. I also feel like it's up to the Erie Police Department, to community police. And like I've told them before, a lot of the police officers in this area don't live in the city of Erie. Our kids don't run into you at Walmart, Dollar General, places out there. They say, "Here, officer so-and-so," like they do with the police cops. When they see him, and they see him somewhere else, they're like, "That cop is in my school." You know, so I think that is something, and it sounds hard, like you said, it's hard to stomach some of these cuts. But I feel like that's a cut that would be worth, be worth thinking about with some valuable time. Because I feel like that's not your duty to assure that. And if something does happen on the property, the Erie Police Department has to come in correspondence anyway.
That's a great point. And I actually called Chief Bowers to ask him about this. And he told me that what our police force is able to do for them is to alleviate that need, and that he didn't know that he'd be able to fill that gap. What we also do in addition to our own forces, many of the officers that are employed in our buildings are off-duty EPD officers. And so, you know, this would be, this certainly would reduce our coverage and reduce the safety in our buildings. And my recommendation on this one would be, look at the statistics, and as we're considering what to cut, think very hard and long about that, given what we know is happening in our community and some of the...
I feel like that's on them. They have to try, rather, and get in the communities, get out there on footwork. We've got a couple guys downtown this summer, they have plans, and they need to expand that type of program.
And ma'am, I agree with you, but I don't want to risk the safety of our children hoping that that will happen. But you're right. And the other thing that we've thrown out there that caused a great stir was the... Yes, ma'am?
I just had a question on the police department. You said that you talked to Chief Bowers, and you wasn't sure if he could fill the gap. But in my experience, I live, I work way through school... But in my experience, I live, work away from school, and I see that Erie Police Department floor very seldomly. And when I do see it, I see it after school hours, I see it all over, but in a school district. So, does this, does our police department that we pay for, do they work outside of school hours? Do they just drive around and help EPD? Like, are we paying for a police department to police the city? Or are we paying for a police department to keep our kids safe?
Well, I guess the answer to that is both. Our, our, our officers have stopped vandalism situations. Our police, our police officers were thanked profusely by the EPD when that horrible shooting incident happened last July. They responded, and without their help, other people would have lost their lives. And so our officers have done an outstanding job.
I don't think that we should be taking public school money to police the Erie City. I mean, if they're working after school hours and outside of the schools, cut it. Because that's not helping, the problems in the community aren't helping educate the children, especially if we're spending a million dollars to police the city, because it's not, it's not helping.
I do have reports that I can provide for the public on what they actually do. And I would say that the bulk of their work is for the schools and within the schools. Their jurisdiction is only within the schools. So, they were called up by EPD to help in that particular incident. Yes ma'am?
Now, would this eliminate a police officer in the school, or there would be a police officer in the school?
Again, this is a potential budget cut, in all likelihood it would mean there wouldn't be police in the school. If we, that's, that's that whole nine hundred and thirty-nine, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. If we put some of that money back, we could still have part-time police officers probably in some of our buildings. Closing a high school is another one that's, obviously, this is almost impossible to comprehend. And if we closed a high school and put our community through that trauma, we'd save all of nine hundred thousand dollars. We're going to talk in a moment about another option for our high schools that would obviate that particular cut. But that is what we could save if we closed the high school. Another thing that we could cut, and we had a presentation from our, Mrs. Zimmer, who is our, is our administrator in charge of libraries, is to completely cut libraries. We'd save six hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred dollars. We have fifteen libraries that we could close. As it stands right now, we have about eighteen thousand dollars budgeted for new library books. And we do have, we have been quite frugal. We only spent six thousand dollars on eighteen schools for library books this past year. By contrast, Brian informed me that the budget for library books in three libraries in northeast is forty thousand dollars.
Could students possibly run like a, for themselves, library that would run off their own system?
We, if, again, if we make these cuts, we would have to think about solutions like that, ma'am, yes?
I actually want to take a step to the extracurricular activities, which I think would include libraries, if you ask me. And I think cutting those things are extremely destructive to our children's positive outlook. These activities are the moments where our children get to come outside and think. And sometimes we need, we need a moment to step outside in order to regain that focus. And through these activities, it's actually an exploration of where the children learn, to explore who they are, and what they like to do, and what their gifts are. And if we take that away, then we're basically saying, what do you have? What are you good at besides doing math and those things? We like them to know math and reading, can't go without a library, and they can't read, you know? So they also need that moment to just relax and to be a child. Because as the lady that did the presentation earlier, there's a lot of factors that impact them. And so they go home to their communities where they're always in the trauma, where, you know, a parent is at home, not because the parent doesn't care, but because the parent is working two or three jobs. Because the way the insurance is set up, that agency may not be able to give them full time. So they have to get ten hours here, fifteen hours there. And so I think we really need to consider that, you know, how pivotal it is, pivotal it is for our children to have a positive outlook when we look to eliminating a lot of things. And one thing comes to my mind is, when do we start going to our legislators and saying, we're not going to pass that, we don't care if we don't pass it. Until we have the momentum to stand up and say, we're not doing this anymore, we don't care if we don't pass our budget, you're going to get us some money. And if you don't get us some money, we're not going to vote for you.
Sir? I'm sorry.
A lot of us who are saying, you know, as parents, we worry about, you know... I just get a fast look at these cuts, and every year, the state legislature, even the federal government, they help them anyway. We can't do something as a school district, as a state, or as citizens, because no matter what, they're elected by us. And if we don't stand up, this is, again, we won't have to educate our children.
You're right.
And everybody, if you want to think that arts and these other added bonuses to go in school are positive in developing our children's education as a society, then you're totally lost.
You're a hundred percent right.
Exactly correct. Someone on the other side here has a question.
Dr. Duff, tell what they're both saying. We don't have art, we don't have music, we don't have extracurricular activities, we're raising robots. You know, we're all saying stuff that you all know. You know, we need an outlet to say, because otherwise, we're going to be reeling. And you happen to be the people we need to say it to. You're obviously going to tell us more about who we need to call, email, text, to his Facebook page we need to blow up, so we can find out what we need to do.
Sir, thank you. Thank you.
One of my questions about the tax, you know, for raising taxes, you said one point four million, I think, was what you could generate. That's what you generate if I move to water. Or you're going to listen to that, right? Somebody else is going to move out here, and you're not even going to get the money you're expecting. So all of this, all of this has this snowball effect, that just keeps rolling, like they say, what rolls downhill, and it's all laying on our heads right now. So...
You're a hundred percent right, that's, that's what's wrong. Scott Moss, down at the assessment office, told me, he sees a tipping point right now, where people aren't going to stay in the city. They already aren't. Charles Booke, that did the comprehensive study for the city, said that he, they, their study showed that the people are on the, there are a whole bunch of people with one foot in the city and one foot out.
Yeah, I, 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 the forty-one years, my entire life in the city of Erie, with Roosevelt, with Academy, for three years, they closed that down, I was the first graduate, class of second tech. My wife, she's waterford. For the last fourteen years, since we've been married, she's been telling me, we should move out of waterford. I love this city, I'm like, you got a nice home here, things are going cool, we don't need to do that. I got one foot out the door, halfway to waterford.
There's probably a lot of folks in this city who are right with you. And that's why this is so important. That's, I've been saying this since I took this job, that as the schools, as the Erie School District goes, so goes the city. I've been saying it everywhere I can say, to whomever will listen.
Where's the mayor?
Not here.
Yeah, I do, one, I apologize, I'm going to have to leave early, I have to go coach my son's baseball game. But, one, I really appreciate all of you being here. We go to these meetings all the time, and there's like two or three people best. Most of them are school district employees, you know, so it's nice to have all you here. And the frustration that you feel, I'm glad you feel it, because we feel it too. And we need to have that uproar from you. Because the politicians that give us the money, we don't, we don't make any money, we don't get any money. We can't, with the exception of taxes, which we're all committed not to raise, because it's, we're already getting taxed a ludicrous amount. Somebody like my mother, who can't afford her own taxes, you know, because she wants to live in Erie, but this is the way it is. It's crazy, so I really appreciate all of you, and we get your position, man. I don't even know you, but I agree completely, I'd love another beer with you, because I'm sure you and I would totally agree. I'm looking at money. But, so like, they will see, like, my daughter, similar to Dr. Baden's, I have two children in schools. One goes to them, and I know these guys that are ice consultants, Grover Cleveland, they did a great job, so thank you for that. But like, my daughter is a junior at collegiate. You know, all she does, she can't let her phone down. The whole time, she, now, it's different, like when I went to East, you know, I knew my friends from East, maybe a couple from Academy, a couple from Tech. These kids know everybody from Prep, Vella, McDowell, Fort LeBout, every other school. And they tease her, she goes to collegiate. Collegiate, you know, is arguably one of the best schools in, not in Erie, in the state. You know, and then, and her friends are teasing, oh, you go to that school? What's the last name, was swimming in that pool? You know, my, our children, I know they go to Grover Cleveland, where Dr. Baden says that as well. Look at the ceilings over there. Then they go to, go to northeast, because she's playing volleyball over there. She plays volleyball out of McDowell. They look at all those beautiful gyms. We can't have, it's not that we don't want to do it. We have crappy, you know, track in Central, I just there, I mean, in Central. I was there for a color run on Saturday, and it was embarrassing. Which is absolutely embarrassing, you know, and I live right at the Roosevelt. But it, it, it's not that we don't, the real issue is, let me roll down this, the state legislatures, the people that are giving us the money are not doing their job. And without calling anybody out individually, you guys all have to, just like the gentleman said, blow up their phones. You have to get them to remember that we're here in Erie. We're not Philadelphia, we're not Pittsburgh. But we don't have the money that they're getting either. We started taking a look at all the scattered grants, and who's getting the money? It's not that this gentleman here and that one there, these two, whatever they get paid, should get paid more, because they're trying. But the officials that have to go, my son's going to be mad because I'm going to push him for space. But it's frustrating for all of us. And until the powers that be give us the money in the main things, that basic funding formula. If we don't get the money, how can we compete? Why, just like that gentleman says, why do I, why should I stay in Erie? Why shouldn't I go educate my children, get my children educated somewhere? Where Dr. Baden was telling us before we had the meeting here, there's some school, I don't recall, oh, this funding is so bad, we might not even be able to put our new drama wing on without getting some private money. Drama wing? Are you kidding me? We want to be able to have ceilings that's not falling down on us. You know, and that's the immediacy of the situation, and it comes to the amount of money that we're just not getting.
So I have, you mentioned contacting the legislators. And when this first came up several months ago, before your meeting, your other meeting, we had the legislators, we're all listed on the website, and I emailed every single one of those legislators. And I, I gave a long email, maybe it was too long. But I expressed all my concerns, and all I got was the obligatory, thank you for your concern. And there was nothing, there was no response. And I am just so, it makes me sick to think that these cuts are happening and nobody is here for it. And we have to collectively speak out as a community, as concerned citizens. We need to rally the people who are, who are in our community's leadership. You know, the mayor should be here, the mayor should be here. So there should be more concern by the leadership of the community. Because like you said, where the schools go, there goes the community. And we also need to rally those other people, even if they have kids at Prep, even if they have kids going at Merziers, they're living in the community, they should be concerned. And so it's very, it's really heartbreaking. And I would like to know what we can do as a collective voice to make our concerns known.
In behalf of representation, our, we have representation from State Senator Wiley's office here. Our county executive, Kathy Dahlke, was represented this year.
Is that Kathy?
Kathy's here. I'm sorry, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Kathy. I have to stay here. I'm sorry. Oh yes, Julie, Governor Wolf's office is here as well. So we have, you know, ears, and we need to make sure that...
My thing is, about this meeting, it's all cuts, 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 because we don't have the funds from the state that they're not giving it to us. Well, we still have bills, so why don't we have a slideshow or a plan where what we're going to do to get more money? Because there's money out there to get. We just need to fundraise, or, we have two big casinos, I don't know what they, what they contribute to us, but there's plenty to go to hit money.
Ma'am, I agree with you, but you know what? We've proven, and I don't know if you have more slides about the funding situation? The state's already acknowledged that we're underfunded by thirty-seven million dollars. And they've already identified that there are three hundred and twenty districts that are getting too much money from the state, and a hundred and eighty districts that are getting not enough. And we're on the very low end, toward the low end of the districts that are not getting enough. They've said this, Republicans, Democrats alike, all the caucuses, everybody in our government has acknowledged that this fair funding, that if they actually tied the funding to the kids, and adjusted the funding according to your need, that we should be getting thirty-seven million dollars more. Now, we're talking about cutting ten million. If we got thirty-seven million dollars more, it'd be like winning the Powerball. The thing, and then if you think about it, it's not that crazy, because if you go around, if you go out and visit, and we're going to start doing this, if you go around and start visiting the surrounding districts, again, not to take away from them, not to suggest that they are doing anything wrong, but this policy that's called hold harmless, that has allowed districts to just keep on being funded, even though they've lost kids, while we lose, is wrong. And it's why we don't, we can't have a track.
But I mean, what are we doing to go, is there something we can do to raise money, or to get money funded locally?
We need to put pressure on our government to implement this fair funding formula quicker. We didn't get into that, are we going to get into that, Brian? Okay, the fair fun, and Ray, I'll get to you, wait a minute. So, okay, so this fair funding formula, if they gave it to us all, and if they just gave us our money according to the fair funding formula, we'd get thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven million dollars more than we're currently getting. What they decided to do, though, is so they wouldn't hurt those three hundred and twenty districts that get too much money right now, is they said, we're just going to put, we're just going to give the new money out according to the fair funding formula. So, that means it'll take twenty-seven years before we'll even see half of that thirty-seven million dollars. It'll take a hundred years before we see ninety-two percent of that thirty-seven million dollars. A hundred years, if they only give it out in little tiny bits, two percent per year. So, that, that to me is cowardly. That's like saying, yep, you deserve thirty-seven million dollars, but we're going to give it to you a dollar a day. That's probably, that's probably even generous. It's like someone starving, or I'm sorry, someone who is dying of thirst in a desert, and someone comes along and said, hey, look, I've got a gallon of water for you, but you can only have it one drop per day. It's too little, too late if they do it that way. It's too little, too late. It's an admission, it's a glaring admission that Pennsylvania has a bad funding system. We have, in our state, the fiftieth ranked funding system in terms of inequity in this entire country. We're number fifty, the worst, in the disparity between the districts that have and the districts that have not. And they have a path, a clear path to fix it, and there's not the will to do it. Yes ma'am?
We've got twelve thousand kids, right? How many families does that represent? Which schools have PTOs? How can the PTOs support them? Let them educate and equip the parents within our schools so that they can make the phone calls, make the emails? There are, how many families represented in this room? Is this, is this a half of a percentage of the families that attend our schools?
Tiny, tiny fraction.
Let's take advantage of the power that we have in numbers, but we have to do it in a manner that is understandable by the parents that we serve. Allow your PTOs to do that. Not every school has a PTO, but the PTOs adhere at Jefferson, we will help the other schools. Give us what we need to educate and equip those parents, so that we can support you. And David Grover Cleveland, you've got two PTOs here. Equip, let, help us go out and equip those up here.
So one thing we can do to equip everyone, on our website, the entire presentation that Brian pulled a lot of these slides from, that talk about the funding formula and how, I mean, it proves beyond a shadow of doubt that we've been underfunded. We've shown this, we've gone to, and this is, this doesn't break down by party or anything, I'm not meaning this as individual slam, but we presented this, the larger presentation that goes through all the detail that we did at a public meeting last month. We've, we have taken that on the road to our local delegation that is fully versed in this and supportive of us. But we've taken it to Harrisburg. Brian and I, as recently as last week, presented this entire, this entire presentation to the entire Republican leadership, since they have the majorities in the House and Senate. We took it to every one of the offices of the leadership of the Republican caucus. The budget chairs, I'm sorry, the appropriations committee chairs, in the House and Senate. We took it to the, the... We took it to the, the, um, majority leaders in the House and Senate. We took it to the, uh, President, Office of the President Pro Tem of the Senate. We took it to the, um, Trinity, what else, Brian? Uh, the Speaker of the House's office. We took it everywhere, and everyone who looked at it said, yeah, you've got a real problem there. Yeah, this is a, this is a, this is, this is the, this is a perfect example of the unfairness of the funding. Because remember, the Republicans and the Democrats agreed on the fair funding formula. There are, there are some Republican folks out there that are pushing to, to give the money, any new money to only those districts that are on the, on the losing end of the fair funding formula. But there's not the will to do it. It's like we don't want to, we don't want to tick off our home districts because we're going to make Erie right. And take away, but I'm saying, you don't need to take it away. Just give new money only to those districts that are underfunded. That would be one solution. Or come up with some other more aggressive way to get that fair funding to the districts that need it before we have to cut our kids out of, you know, the possibility of, of a quality education.
This gentleman here had a governor request behind him, so...
I'm just thinking, is there, do we have any leverage, equity, or something that we can withhold from the state in Harrisburg that we do not give them until they give something?
We tried that, sir. Okay, so here's what we did. Going back, going back to the budget impasse, during the budget impasse, we, we didn't pay our charter school bills. And we, we actually didn't pay any of our bills except the utilities. They're the only people that had, that, that had no mercy. If we didn't pay our utility bills, they would have shut off the lights. But we didn't pay anybody else, and our, and our vendors were very, very, uh, understanding. They, I guess they figured they'd eventually be paid. But if we don't pay our charter school bills, for example, they will simply take it out of our subsidy and, and take it out of our hands.
Can we close the charter schools? Why isn't that an option?
Because it's against the law.
What do we have five charter schools for? And that's all government-funded and money out of my pocket.
Yes, it is, and out of, and out of our budget.
Right.
We don't have control.
I just want to say something else, because I really, my show... I wanted to thank Dr. Batten, so, I'm sorry, I'm about to leave, I'm sorry. I've not spoken several times, and I'm going to be here next week. So see y'all here next week, if you're going to be here.
It'll be at Eastside.
Justin, I'll be there. Um, what I wanted to say was thank Dr. Batten, because, um, if anybody really paid attention, like he said, instead of being so angry, we've been, um, in this type of crisis, and like he said, he's been making these cuts for years. I also, um, want to, you know, make, mention to the former, um, superintendent that I feel I could have addressed some of these issues before you came here, but we won't cite his name. Um, but however, um, I will say that, um, you know, I think that, um, there's some stuff we can talk about next week when it comes to the students, um, probably partaking in some of these, um, as far as like the library. I mean, students can help with secretary, they're learning these job skills at Central Tech and, um, can help, you know, with some of these, um, delegate some of these duties around the school. A lot of y'all don't understand that, um, our district was gerrymandered out. Um, and so that we have a lot of representatives that have never been to Erie, are from Erie, and, and don't really care about representing Erie, but their, their, their logo is on our map here. And so that's what we do have to do is get, is get, um, you know, better representation. And I, I want to talk about how we can really get our lobbying techniques, um, together, because that's what it, that's what it takes, lobbying. And that takes money, but that takes a community working together. And so, um, see y'all next week, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Some of you know me. Mr. Folito, uh, I was debating whether I was going to say something tonight. I don't have a dog in this race, but what happens in this little district of Erie does not stay in Erie City.
Amen.
It will come into the county, it will come into Mill Creek Township. And some of you know, I am a school board director, just elected last year in Mill Creek Township. I am not representing the Mill Creek Township School District. I'm here as a citizen of Erie County. Dr. Batten, I want to thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Folito. When I have called you and also some of the board members, when I called you before I was elected, you were open, transparent, you educated me. What I would suggest, Dr. Batten's and also Mr. Folito have stated the truth, they are transparent. I am learning more and more every day. What happened in Mill Creek, consider that. You need a grassroots movement to contact your legislators. If they are not responding, you vote them out of office. It's a serious challenge. What happened in Mill Creek Township in two thousand and twelve? I was part of a group of No New McDowell. They wanted the board pass the hundred million dollar high school. We got together, we had over two or three thousand signatures that we sent to the Secretary of PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, all right? We stopped it. Otherwise, we would have had, in just Mill Creek, a hundred and eighty million dollar debt. So again, um, thank you, Dr. Batten. You are a leader. You, you exhibit leadership. And thank the board for answering my questions, and also Mr. Folito. And actually, everyone, Terry, uh, she hasn't answered my questions, but I called here. All I can say is thank you, you are doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Batten, I appreciate it. Is there more that we need to... There's more. Let's just take one more question, and then we can proceed. And you're basically waving.
Hi, um, I, uh, my name's Hope Markson, and I live in, in this city. I have two children with special needs, um, that are in the district. Um, but my question is, has there been any efforts to coordinate with other underfunded districts in the state? And are there any, um, organizing efforts being made to get all of the underfunded districts to put pressure on the legislature? Because I think that, in my experience, for the most part, and I spoke with both of my legislators this morning when I heard the news in the paper, and both of them are on the same side as Dr. Batten's school district. Uh, but there are only one in an entire senate and an entire house. Um, so I feel like we need to definitely communicate, you know, our concerns to them, but to also work with, um, the other, um, districts that are underfunded and put a lot of pressure on the people that, um, that are making decisions about that.
That's a great question, and, and we have. Um, in fact, during the impasse, um, I, I contact, I actually contacted, I don't know, over a hundred different districts. I got over thirty of them to sign a letter, um, appealing to the Department of Education to release our money at that time. Uh, there is a, there is a, a groundswell of, of, uh, organization around the fair funding formula. There's, there's a, uh, there's one, there's one group called Equity First, and there's another one called the, it's the Coalition for, for Fair Funding. And, you know, there, there are a lot of lobbying efforts underway. Um, what we decided most recently, though, is we know there are other districts that, that have the same problem that we have, but we think, we do, we definitely think there's a, a very small number of districts that have made the sorts of sacrifices and done the hard work that you as a community and that we as a board and administration have done here in Erie. We're, we're getting tired, actually, of being told when we go to Harrisburg that, oh, you're just like these other districts. Because we're not. And we made that case loud and clear to the Republican leadership when we went there last week. They, they, their first reaction was, oh, yeah, get in line, there's a lot of other districts just like you. But when we show them our numbers, and show how little we're getting in terms of state and local funding, and how much we've raised our taxes and how many cuts we've made, a lot of districts that are, that are in, in bad situations and that are underfunded have not made the cuts that we've already made. Which is why, um, if we can get through the rest of this, I'll, I'll save my closing comments for the board as we contemplate over the course of the next week what to do with this budget. Um, I'll, I'll let you know what I think we ought to do.
Thank you. Uh, we, we're going to have to, uh, go to executive sessions, or it's going to be a long evening here, so if you would, Dr. Batten...
We'll try to wrap it up.
Please, uh, move forward with it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the budget timeline that, that we're under with the state, uh, school code, next, next week, May twenty-fifth, we'll have to adopt a proposed final budget, so it's available for public inspection for thirty days. And then by June twenty-ninth, we have to adopt a final budget. And, um, we've heard a lot tonight, and have discussed internally, why don't we just not adopt a budget? But that's the only way that, uh, we have ability to levy taxes, so we really have no choice. Otherwise, we won't be able to send out our tax bills in August.
We have to have a balanced budget, best?
Technically.
Good question.
I'm going to go for one of those cuts that we, just a couple minutes ago. I don't know how many of my kids from East High end up graduating because of extracurricular activities. It's football, or band, or whatever it might have been for those twenty-five years. You can't take that away from the kids. Not one trumpet, I don't...
So, so here's, here's, uh, on that note, here's, here's where we are right now, and here's what I think the, our options are. We've, we've gone to, we've, we've gone to everybody in Harrisburg that we, we think could have some ability to help us. And we've been told pretty clearly that there's no special help on the way for Erie. We've been told it time and time again, and we've, we've been, next week, we're, Brian and I are going to testify at a hearing in Harrisburg, or at least I am, I don't know if you've committed yet, but, um, that'll be our seventh trip. It'll be our seventh trip to go lobby our district's case.
Our parents, can we go, can we lobby?
I'll tell you what, that's a good idea. We may have to figure out a venue, it's time to do it. Would you guys all want to go?
Rock and roll.
So, uh... So again... We'll look for charitable contribution. I already mentioned that in the most recently passed fiscal code, the, the fair funding formula was applied only to new money. It's, it's, it's not going to help us. Go ahead. Um, and, and all of this discussion, all of this discussion omits one big, huge, glaring problem. We haven't even talked about our capital, our capital needs. Our buildings are literally crumbling around us. We have a handful of newer buildings, we have a couple places where there's been some renovation, but we have some kids going to school, going to school in buildings that nobody in the county would send their kids to.
Thank you.
And, and I'll tell you one thing more, in talking to some folks from the county and talking to some folks down in Harrisburg, there is a sentiment out there that, well, those kids don't know any better. I, I'm not kidding, I've heard this. They're, they're okay with what they have, they don't know any better. We had a gentleman come in from one of the townships to, to make a very kind charitable donation in one of our buildings, and looked around and thought like, wow, this looks like something out of the forties. Because it is. That's real. Distributing the money the way they've planned to distribute it right now is too little, too late for our district. We are, we either have to make these cuts that we don't want to make, or we have to go bankrupt.
Is going bankrupt, how? Like, if we, if we went bankrupt, what would happen?
You know what's really interesting? The districts that have gone bankrupt haven't made the cuts we're talking about. The, the districts that are in receivership right now still have sports teams. How? The districts that are in receivership right now get five thousand dollars more than us per student in some cases. Pittsburgh, not in receivership, gets seven thousand five hundred dollars per student more than us. Over twenty thousand dollars a kid in Pittsburgh? Why? Well, because they had, they've had over the years influential legislators and big delegations. Under, under, under Governor Rendell's administration, they passed a special law that applied only to Pittsburgh that gave them seventeen million dollars more added to their funding over the course of a five-year period. Allentown, under Governor Corbett, got eight million dollars because they have a lot of VLL students. Because of a one-line piece of code in the, in that year's education funding bill that gave them an eight million dollar increase. A law written that only applied to Allentown.
How do we write a law for Erie?
We're as sure as hectron, but we're being told it's probably not going to happen. Next. So here, here's what drew a lot of you in here tonight. One of the things that, that at least three other districts have done in order to be able to provide education mandated by law is to close their high school programs and work with surrounding districts to educate their high school students. Wilkinsburg has done it, um, Du- uh, Duquesne has done it.
Midland.
And Midland. In our case, this is an equity issue. We think that if we were to, if you were to take this course of action, we certainly couldn't do it this year, that'd be way too hard to pull off. But if we provided tuition to send our students to the districts around us that have all these resources, that have technology and one-to-one technology programs where every kid gets a, a laptop or a, or a tablet PC, where, where kids that go out for the track team actually run on an eight-lane, all-weather track, and, and, uh, go to districts that are still relatively unfunded, that have ask, that have turf on their softball and baseball, baseball fields in addition to their football fields. Um, if, if we could have, allow our children the opportunity to attend those schools where they have elementary foreign language instruction, right here in the county, why would we not do that? So before we start thinking that this is a scare tactic, think about what our kids have available to them. Even our kids at Collegiate Academy that, that have a landmark promenade that overlooks the lake, overlooks Veteran Stadium, that you can't walk on because the rebar in the cement has rotted to the point where it's unsafe. Where a pool in that building looks like something out of a zombie apocalypse movie.
How long does it take to transport our students? Because we have trouble transporting our students to the schools and our districts.
We would be, we would be able to transport our students, pay tuition to the other districts, and still save money. That's a great question. That's a great question. And that's, again, before we get, before we get into details of this, this is something we're looking at for the seventeen, eighteen school year. I already have the, uh, I've, I've already been contacted by the intermediate unit and by the superintendents in the districts closest to us that they're willing to work with me and work with a team, a task force, to figure out how feasible this is and how many students might be able to be accommodated. Um, in, in the places where this has been done, they negotiated agreements. So X district could take so many students, and those students were actually assigned. The law says that if we don't offer high school, students have the right to attend the school that is nearest or most conveniently located to their homes. Now, when you start to think about the equity involved with Hold Harmless, and you start to see the per pupil, if you remember back to the graph that Brian showed you that showed where our per pupil was and where all the other districts' per pupil expenditures were? If our students, oh, he's going to go back to it, great, thank you. That's one of the most telling graphs that we have. We have an equity problem that we simply can't solve. And if we can, if we can provide the same resources that the students in other districts enjoy, then we need to consider it. And all I'm asking is that we take this year to have that conversation as a community, and that I have that conversation with my peers in other school districts, and this board thinks about it and considers it and weighs that option. I, I think it's something we need to seriously consider.
But what happens to the kids that weren't accepted because there's only a lot of, so what would happen to them?
The law, the law requires the other districts to take our students.
And keep in mind that over the last several years, the county school districts have seen a twenty percent decline in enrollment. So there, there is capacity in the county.
Ray.
The conversation, are you stating, uh, the regional government type of, uh, situation? We have a progressive county government, uh, county council, a little bit ahead of their time. We had to have a staggering city government, is that what you're referring to?
Well, this would look a lot like regionalism, wouldn't it? Um, all of us sharing in the education of our high school-aged youth.
And I do think of Pittsburgh, that's kind of how, why they're so successful in this, the, uh, the work, so seeing this together.
Ray, it's a step. It's a step, and it's something that we have no choice but to contemplate. We have to at least talk about it, we'll gather the information, and we'll, and we'll report, we'll keep the community involved and, and appraised. Yes?
Uh, just a quick suggestion that I thought of, rather than being so drastic and close all four of these high schools, what if you downsize and one closed one, put these other kids and the other remaining three? Um, I know you briefly mentioned the charter schools, but there are five charter schools. How do we get around that? And I think that closing a school is an option, let's close a couple charter schools, three of them would be...
So, so we're thinking, okay, so to your point, we're thinking about, and we can't do anything about the charter schools, but as far as... about the charter schools, but as far as closing a high school and then putting all the students in a high school, then it still leaves us having to make these cuts.
Well, and also a lot of something else, too. What if you make collegiate? Collegiate is one of the best high schools in the state. What a shame to close that one. And honestly, the year you're talking about implementing it is going to be my son's senior year. But what if you make collegiate like a tuition school? And then, you know, that would be.
So it's a public, it's a public school at this point?
It is.
There is a public.
You have to be accepted, so open the doors to all the high school kids. Let them all get that great education that they get in academy. Because the kids at Central, that give half of their school to Roosevelt, they don't get the same education as the kids that do at academy. So if you open the door and give the less privileged kids that don't get all A's and B's and a chance to get into academy, that might change something.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no, I know she had a marriage.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you down there.
But I, when I was online earlier, and I also know some people in the county have this fear of, we don't want city kids in our school. And I was talking to a city school, I still have people like, you went to Mississippi? It was like, how did you survive? So there's a negative causation all around. So how can we guarantee that our kids are not going to get a negative backlash, only from, not only from the student, but from faculty who are like, I didn't want to work in a city school, I wanted to work in a county school, now I'm a city kid.
Isn't it interesting that that sort of thing is surfacing now?
It is.
Mine is Piper Burley.
And.
Yes, I have.
But I think that, and I've even had coworkers of mine, like, we moved out of this city, go keep our kids out of this. And if that's their mindset, there's going to be so much tension of city kids, how can we guarantee that our city kids, our youth, are not going to suffer from this negativity and this image and this stereotype that's already put on them?
It's, yeah, that is a huge challenge, and that's what we said, we said we'd have to have a task force to investigate this over the course of this year, and make provisions for that. It's been done in other communities. It's unthinkable that we're in this situation, but what you've just described is part of our biggest problem in our area, that the city is somehow separate from the region. That we're, like, someone wants to build a wall around us. Our kids, if you look at our test scores, now, we have a problem with overall achievement, but there are kids scoring in the advanced range on every assessment, just like there are all over the state. There are kids at Piper Burley, kids at Lane, kids at Grover Cleveland, who are scoring advanced. That puts them in the top 10% of all the kids in the Commonwealth, no matter what their ZUPCO is. They're here. We have great kids in our district. And it might take the course of a year and meeting with these other districts, and maybe having some chance for students to interact, to realize that this isn't the end of the world. When you read about all the crime and the negative gang activity and that sort of thing that happens in our community, it's a small percentage of our kids. It's not all of our kids. But people don't know that. And when people come into our schools, and they walk into East High and they see teaching and learning happening, and they don't see riots in the hallway, they're surprised. And I love their reaction when we do walk people through there. I had somebody that came in from one of the universities to deal, and had to tell me how well behaved our children were. Like, duh. You know, I think at this point, this is a conversation, a community conversation that I promise will take place openly and transparently over the course of the next several months. And I'm going to ask your indulgence to, I know you probably have a ton of questions, but let me just finish here. I want to give the folks that are with us here, who are representatives and so forth, to speak if they'd like to. I know Mr. Jim Schaftner is here, who's done a lot of work on this and has been extremely helpful for us. And we have, I'm sorry, keep being screened, I know you wanted to talk, so we'll have that one last comment. You get the last word.
Oh, cool. It's actually in reference to this chart and the concept of children going, our district children going to other district high schools, and us paying for that, to that district. So some of these other districts, I don't know, but I'm just going to name, for example, let's say Harvard Creek is at a higher end of monies that they get compared to us. If 10 of our kids go there, will they get 10 kids more worth of dollars because their creeps are increased, or is the money only coming from what has been allotted to Erie and then sent to the county?
The way it works is it would be up to us to pay that. We'd still get credit for the head count in this new formula. We'd still have, they'd be, average daily membership is a crude way of saying student head count, but we would still get credit for those ADMs. We'd be paying tuition and costs associated with transportation to those districts.
So, but the cost for the students would go to that district, or still come to a overall?
We would still get credit for that head count, because we'd have money going out. The money would still come to us.
So that's really not, so by closing the schools, we're not going to be spending money for the staff, and we're not going to be spending money to run the building, etc.
You got it.
We will only be spending money, basically, to transport the child, and whatever money's attached to that student goes to that district.
That's correct, and the net of that, as far as Brian's been able to calculate so far, for us would be a savings of about $3 million a year.
What, we should have property taxes since we won't have those schools?
Well, I don't think there's any, given what we know about state funding right now, I don't think there's any worry that anyone in Erie should have about this board raising property taxes. I can't speak for the city and county. We're only one of the three taxing bodies, but I don't know that I have five votes here to raise anyone's taxes.
Mr. President, if I could, I want you to know something here, that this is a discussion that we're having, that the superintendent has just brought to us. Two days ago, we didn't, you know, this is, this is something that is just brought to us. So anybody who thinks that this decision is made, that we're going to close those four high schools, or that we're going to make the kind of cuts that we're talking about on there, how that's going to go, this is a discussion that still has to take place. Nothing is absolute at this point, because I have a problem, I mean, the one that got accepted, I'm not willing to risk the safety of our children by getting rid of our police force. I'm not willing, I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to cut the extracurricular activities like sports. I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not for cutting any of the arts and musics in the schools. So I don't, I don't know, I don't have any answers right now, but that's what this is. This is something that we're here to consider, and we're going to start talking about, we're going to start thinking about. But for anybody to think that we're just jumping on this, and that, okay, we're going to close those four high schools, which I don't think is a good idea, but I can understand the logic in that if we can't provide extracurricular activities, if we can't provide art and music, if we can't provide the safety that we need for our kids, then we have to find a solution, and this may be one of the solutions we have to consider. But that's what this is about, having to maybe consider these solutions.
Ed Brzezinski, our director.
I think it's time we get things lined up here a little bit. What we're talking about is unless, unless the state does something fair for us, these are things that we have to look at no matter how painful. The answer isn't to write dirty letters to Sean Wiley, or to Fab, or, hey, you guys, because those guys have been working hard for us. But they go down to Harrisburg, and most of those legislators in Harrisburg think Erie is either part of Ohio or New York.
Or Canada.
Yeah, Canada. And they don't give a rat. We have got, we'll set something.
They're the other part.
Okay, I'm not, we have to get the fair funding, because if we don't, as much as I hate to see any of this stuff, we're going to have to look at it. It pains me. I told you, I just spoke up already about the trumpet and about extracurricular. We have to push the fair funding, we have to.
I agree, the fair funding, you got to get it, and you said, you know, don't, whatever, go after the outlined county schools and stuff. If they're getting extra money, there should, adjustments should be made, you know? It just has to, you know, and they have to understand.
I think they do.
Well, then it should happen. We should let it keep it, it should be, it should be pulled back. And then, one other point I wanted to make, as far as taking our kids and sending them to, out to the county schools, that will not work. Hands out, I mean, I could be totally wrong on this, but that will not work. What happened when they put a collegiate academy, they separated kids, and they picked winners and losers or whatever, but what they did is they pulled kids out of parochial schools, and now instead of them paying parochial school things, they got a free education that was equal to those parochial schools. And so that put a bigger burden on the taxpayers of Erie, that now we're paying $12,000 for those kids to go to school. You send kids out to, think the city kids, send them out to the county, all that's going to do is pull more kids out of parochial schools that are paying for schools or paying for other private schooling. And they say, hey, we got a free ride from the city to go, to go play at Fort Lebuck's, you know, their football team isn't big, so I can't play at Fort Lebuck's, so I can play out there, I can be a star. And I live in the city, well, now the city can pay. So that's, it's sad, when you, when you start shipping kids around and paying for them, if you're going to go that route, shut all the public schools down and make it all private, and pay $12,000, and then your front.
Make them all charter.
Not charter schools. Charter schools, I'm all for the charter schools. And trust me, the charter school, those people are working hard, and those schools are full, they have every, they're facing every challenge that the city is, every challenge that the parochial schools are facing.
Every challenge but being closed. Because if we can't close a charter school, the men outside can say, I don't want to hear that. Your kids will go to school no matter what. I don't want to hear that.
So if charter schools, if charter schools do not fulfill their charter, they do go away. Okay? There's not something, you can't shut them down, but if they can't fulfill their charter, they can't stay.
But we have schools that are open and fulfilling and teaching our kids, and we're losing them because of all the kids that are going to charter schools. So yes.
Mr. Casilla.
Yes, yeah, every kid that goes to charter school, we lose public funding.
That is public.
Mr. Casilla, I believe we have, we have young children that are here, it's going to be a late night anyway we go. We've been doing this now for two hours, and Dr. Adams has yet to get his recommendation.
That's true. That's true. Thank you for that. I appreciate your comments, everyone.
So before I, before I close, we do have guests tonight who I want to give the opportunity, if anyone would like to say anything, please do. Speak now, I prefer to hold your peace.
Well, I'm an every boy that went to Perry, so I feel kind of bad about all this tonight, but frankly, we have talked about this for the last two years. You're done. You're done. You can't tax your way out of it. You can't cut your way out of it. You're just done. You're going to have to find a new way of conducting business. So look at it like the glass is half-full, and we'll figure out a creative way to get this thing done. But you can't continue to do this. There is no money. Harrisburg has turned their back on you. And quite frankly, I like the idea of closing all the high schools and sending these kids out to the county. The facilities are better. You know that. They don't have $290 million of deferred maintenance. I think there's empirical data that states that city, inner-city kids do very well with diversity and learning and playing with children of other districts. It's not a bad idea. It will work. It's going to be your new normal. If there's no money coming from Harrisburg, why tax those of us like me and you who live and work in the city? Why do that? It's not going to solve the problem. It's not going to solve the problem. We saw it coming. It's here. Your leader did everything he possibly could, from the governor to every decision-maker in Harrisburg, to every local legislator. He's spoken to everybody, and they turned their back on you. So you have to find a new way. So look at it like this is a good time. The kids are going to get a better education because you're going to find a better way of conducting your business.
Anyone else? We're going to close up.
If you can't go to another school in one of your districts or whatever, will we have to pay the $15,000 for each one instead of you having to pay?
No, the state actually determines a tuition rate, and it's different from school to school. It depends on their financial information, but we would negotiate that with each of the districts, and again, it would be, at worst, awash, at best, a significant savings for us. And again, before we get too far down the rabbit hole on this one, we're talking about 17, 18, we're talking about a year of discussions and planning. I don't have answers because we only know that three other districts have done this. We don't know all the details. We just know that legally, we're obligated to provide K through 8 education. We are not obligated to provide high school education. And if we're in a situation where we have to cut ourselves into bankruptcy, we may have to consider this.
I just want to add, it makes me think that originally when I first heard about the schools, before high school schools, when I was opposed to, now that we start to discuss it, it makes me remember that children are so resilient. And in order to teach our children to love diversity, it would be a great thing. Yeah, it may be uncomfortable in the beginning, but I think just like the immigrant and the refugee population, they come in, they come from over the country, they have to learn our language and learn our culture. So why are we telling our children to love diversity, but then the first second we give them to be diverse, we say, oh, no, 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 that's, to me, that's theory. We have to begin to embrace it, and when we embrace it as adults, then our children will learn to embrace something new as well. And this will take them into their future when they become adults. When they see something new, they won't be afraid, but they'll say, I can tackle this situation. I have what it takes to try something new.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you, Jenny and your entire team, for really working on this problem that's very, very difficult. I'm the county executive, and one of the things I hate to hear is city and county, because guess what? I live in the city, we're all county residents. If you live in the city, you live in the county. So we divide ourselves right there, and I think that's something we all need to think about when we use language here. We have other municipalities, we have other school districts, but we're all part of Erie County. And what happens here with this school district not only affects those of us in the room who live in the city, but affects every single person, the 280,000 people who live in Erie County. And when I look at our economic status and where we are and what we're trying to do, we have so many great things we're working at, we've got to find a solution. I don't know what it is, I just tell you that I'm here tonight because whatever I can do from my position, I want to help make sure that all of our children in Erie County are not forgotten. In Harrisburg, in my opinion, and I will remove from Harrisburg our local representatives because they are with us on this, but there are many others out there who have forgotten Erie County, who have forgotten people up here. So I just want to let you know that whatever I can do to help move things forward, I'm here with you. And thank you all for being here today.
Thank you very much. Can we cue the video? Get time to close this and go into executive session?
Yes.
So this video was released today at nine o'clock in the morning, and I think it's, I don't know what the hit number is up to right now, but it's, when we came into the meeting, I think it was up near, getting near 40,000 views since nine o'clock this morning.
55,000.
What is it now?
55,000.
55,000 views so far, since nine o'clock this morning.
Erie is not being fairly funded. We, as a school district board and administration, have done our part.
Well, that's it. Done our part. They had more, but you ran out of money. By the way, this was not, this was professionally produced, but by our own staff.
Thank you, guys.
Just started.
Where can we do this video and share?
It's on Facebook, on our Facebook page.
Let's try this again.
I have it memorized, I could probably just do voiceover. Brian's done it enough times, too, I'm sure he can.
We'll do it.
If he had better funding, we'd actually have an audio assistant.
Erie is not being fairly funded at this point. We, as a school district board and administration, have done our part in attempting to right the financial situation of the Erie Public Schools.
This is just some of the major items. Three buildings were closed, we had cut more than 200 full-time positions, central administration was cut in half, and during the last several years, our employees have Central administration was cut in half, and during the last several years, our employees had little or no wage increases.
But why does our state perpetuate a system that spends the most money on the easiest-to-educate students and the least on the most difficult students to educate?
Armenian household income of $33,000 a year is 485th out of 500 school districts. That's a bottom 3%. Are economically disadvantaged. We're 12th in the state, top 3%. Our English language learners, again, top 3. The same with the charter. Our special ed is above average. So given that, you would think that our per pupil funding would be somewhere near the top or at least in the middle, but we're at the bottom.
To have us singled out as the only state in red, the only one with more than a 20% gap between the funding for its wealthiest and poorest school districts, is an embarrassment. Our neighborhoods, our city is different as we start school this year than it was last year at the same time. Many of the same things are happening, and many of the same challenges face our students and their families. But as you're too painfully aware, these scenes are what we dealt with all summer. And as I shared at those professional development sessions, it's this photograph in particular that for me kind of captured the essence of the problem. Those are our, those are our children. That's my kid's school up on the slide over there on the side there. That's where my son Jack goes to school. But if he could go to a school that had a nice building and, like the one next to it, at Northeast, why wouldn't I do that? I don't do it because I believe in the work that's happening in our schools. I believe in Erie's public schools and the teachers that my children have. But is it fair that our kids go to schools like these?
Those are water buckets, by the way.
When the disparity in funding is so great, we can expect a declaration of financial distress in the short term, and we're saying two or three years, without significant reform to the Commonwealth Basic Education Funding Form. But this isn't us saying this. This isn't Prag saying this. This is, this is a respected accounting firm doing a very thorough look at our finances, interviewing all of our financial staff, doing all sorts of background research. This is their conclusion.
So the real question is, we have a low cost per pupil. We spend less than 80% of the school districts across the state. Our tax rate is one of the highest in the county, so why do we continue to struggle?
We have a large problem that can only be solved by people in Harrisburg.
So, so bored, that brings me to my recommendation for our 2016-17 budget. We presented you with all the things we could possibly cut. And I don't know what the consequences would be if we do this. But I'm recommending that we don't raise taxes, number one. I will reiterate that. Our taxpayers are already paying way more than their fair share to generate the second lowest amount of per pupil revenue in our county. We have the lowest state funding of every school district in the county with the greatest need. Nobody who we've shown our data to has been able to refute it. They've tried. Every time Brian begins his presentation, there's a "yeah, but," a "yeah, but," followed by another "yeah, but." And every time they ask that question, he has an answer for them and he has proof. The Commonwealth Foundation wrote an article and tried to say that we are already better funded as a poor, as a "poor" district in quotation marks than the national average, and we disproved that. Brian called the National Center for Education Statistics, they called the Commonwealth Foundation's abusive statistics appalling. They were comparing data from two separate, two years' gap between the data they reported and a 29% difference in the things that were actually counted in the per pupil funding. So we went to the Commonwealth Foundation, met with them, sat at their conference table and argued with their CEO and their author to the point where the author of the article admitted to his boss that the numbers were wrong. We've been in office after office, and nobody has been able to refute our data. Everybody has said, you're right, you're underfunded, but so are a lot of other districts. At this point, we can't ask our taxpayers for more money and shouldn't. We should be giving them a tax rebate. As for the cuts, we're already not providing near what is provided for students in the districts around us. If we make the cuts that we've put on paper for you tonight, we'll be denying our children even more opportunity. And those students that could potentially benefit from attending school in other districts in a year or so, many of those families will go anyway. To contemplate taking sports away from students who face all the dangers of the streets that are documented nightly in our newspaper would be criminal as well. Now, I don't know what my recommendation will bring us, but I can tell you that we are in every way going to be qualified as a recovery district, even though the state has told us that we won't be, we won't be in receivership and there's no extra money. But I'm suggesting that we pass our budget as it stands right now. We've already made $6 million worth of cuts to this year's budget. To cut the extra four, in my mind, is unconscionable. And, I don't know, was it Martin Luther King who talked about like some laws are unjust laws? The law that says we have to have a balanced budget by June 30th will deny our kids, I think, due process. I think equal protection is a question here for our kids. So I'm urging you to think about this, think about these cuts, and consider passing a budget that's not balanced. Consider saying no. Some of you already said no tonight. Consider telling the state that we will not cut our kids anymore. Six years of cutting our way to a balanced budget is enough.
I appreciate your comments, Doctor, and we certainly, as a board, are going to have some very serious decisions to make in the next week. And Brian, thank you for the book of school budget numbers. And in all honesty, I have, in my two years as president, have had the opportunity to work very closely with Jay and Brian since he's been on board. And I could absolutely vouch for, there are no more cuts to be able to be made. It's over. I mean, we can't do anymore. Dr. Adams, you hit the nail on the head. I can tell you personally, I absolutely agree with you that we just can't do this anymore. There's got to be another way. There has to be a better way. And damn it, we're going to find it, one way or another. Ordinarily, we would entertain our community to come and address the board. I'm going to ask that we waive that this evening. I think we are, we're all in the same boat here, and I think we're all of the same opinion. So as long as we're okay with that, I would like to call a recess.
I'm sorry.
I have an idea I'd like to throw out there. You guys are talking about extracurricular activities and things that kids need to do to stay off the streets and whatnot. What about having volunteer community service be part of a requirement for graduating high school? Because this way, they get hands-on in anything in the community and they're staying out of trouble and they're required to be part of the community and do something. With the private schools, do it. Why don't we do it? Not just city, even county schools, every high school student.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
I also don't want to compromise what you're trying to accomplish, and I applaud you for all that you're doing. But as you make these difficult decisions, I'd also like you to look at your community approach that you presented at the beginning of the meeting. Perhaps we need to reach out to some of the nonprofits. We have many nonprofits in the city, and perhaps there is a way for them to come into the schools and provide some of the music and art education that we need. I know in Philadelphia, they do not have the programs, but they do have nonprofits that do that service.
Thank you. And that's exactly what the Community Schools Model would provide. And if we can start with four or five and then grow it to every school, that would be a way to help to do that.
Again, I hate for you to have to make any cuts at all, but the reality is that perhaps you might. So judge your community, let the community help to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess. We're going to convene an executive session discussing legal and personal matters, and then we will adjourn from there. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. Meeting suspended.